To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. It's today, May 3rd, 2017. It's 10:00 a.m. This is a regularly scheduled general meeting for the Board of Commissioners. There are speaker slips on the back door there, so if anyone would like to speak, please grab a slip, fill it out, and get it up to John here up in the clerk's station. Do we have any slips at this point? And that's the order that they came in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, go ahead. Go ahead. Okay, any other speaker slips? Anyone else want to make any comments? Okay, then we'll close it off with these four. If it is an item or that's on an agenda, we'll probably wait to address the comments at that time. If it's not, we will allow the comments when we get down to Agenda Item 5. But first, do we have any agenda amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce.
Consent calendar on Item 6B, intergovernmental agreement with Gold Beach.
Okay, what do you want to do?
Well, it's under consent calendar. We want to have discussion on that.
Okay, so we're going to make that be forward. Just we'll move that out just before Agenda Item 7, administrative action. So you want to pull...
6B? You said just prior to administrative actions, number 7?
Yeah, we'll just move it that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Did you have any others? Commissioner Boyce?
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I want to pull out 6C, and you can put it wherever you want it.
So we'll make that directly after 6B, and we've moved it out of consent calendar. So we've moved...
Did she say 6D?
6C.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay. Do we have any other agenda amendments?
Mr. Chair, there was a late submittal, and it had to do with appointments to CCD, I think. Did the board get those?
Okay, that came just... it was in the mail slot this morning. That's when I saw... okay, that's when I... Okay, what was the reasoning for that? Or do you know?
I'm trying to remember what the reasoning was, but the reason it's on... oh, here's the reasoning. Thank you.
Is it a reasonable reason?
Sure, they needed the appointment by the 18th. Originally, we were going to have this on the 17th, but we couldn't because the 17th got moved to the 24th, so we didn't have a meeting before their need on the 18th, so we had to put it on this agenda. So yes, there was a reasonable reason why we have to put it on now versus the 17th. It won't be here.
Okay. Do either of the Commissioners have any issues with that?
Certainly no, thank you.
No.
Okay, let's move... What is... 2A, we're going to move that after the 2 that were moved out of the consent calendar. So this is going to move... Down here... 2A. Okay, any other amendments? Commissioner Boyce?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
No.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the amendments as...
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Well, second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that... Oops. Okay, so... Okay, on... My watch. Okay, on Agenda Item 4, for announcements, we have the Budget Committee meetings, which are scheduled to begin Monday, May 5th, and run through the end of the...
May 15th.
May 15th, I'm sorry, May 15th to the 19th. There is... we've posted several of those schedules around the office or the hallways here, and I think there have been... well, there'll be additional public notices, several additional public notices per the required calendar and the required Oregon statutes.
When are those going to start and what time? And they'll be in this office or this room, right?
10:00 a.m.
Okay, in this room? Okay.
Correct. All will be in this room, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Monday, the 15th. I think there's the same for the 16th. I'm not sure. I think the 17th also. I'm not sure about the Thursday and Friday, what the beginning time is, and that...
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock, okay, so 10 o'clock for all of those days.
And the schedule is subject to change, I believe?
Correct.
If we get sooner...
We've already moved some, and some may carry over from the late afternoon, and then they would automatically carry forward to the next morning and bump what was there to begin with.
Unless the Budget Committee changes that.
Correct. The general meeting, and we did this last week, because there was a general meeting scheduled for May 17th, which was right in the middle of the budget meetings, and so we moved that, we agreed to move that to May 24th, so there's now a general meeting scheduled for May 24th at 10:00 a.m. Okay, let's go to public comments, and we had... Okay, we have... 2, 3, I guess, that I see here that were not items on the agenda. The first one was Curry Adronimus, and help me on the... where's Dave?
I think it's Anadromus. Anadromus?
Anadromus? And then what's the last word? Oh, fisherman. Oh, okay. Dave, you want to come up, please?
Mr. Barnes, remind us what anadromus means.
It means they spend part of their time in salt water or part of their time in freshwater.
You might have to go to a medical for that.
Inspiring, I think, yeah. Good job. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dave Barnes. I live up on the sunken grades section of Jerry's Flat Road. I'm here this morning on behalf of the Curry Anadromus Fishermen's. We are the volunteer group that takes care of the Indian Creek Fish Hatchery over here on Jerry's Flat Road, and our permit is run through the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and it is a five-year permit that we get to operate the fishery. Just to give you an idea of some of the things that we do, we have approximately 200 volunteers who've contributed about 3,000 hours of their time every year, 2,000 to 3,000 hours over at the hatchery every year, taking care of everything from raising the fish to taking care of the hatchery. Commissioner Boyce was over there with us in the fall mucking out one of our brood tanks before we could get our spawning fish in. We also put on the fishing derby on the road. We participate with ODFW. It's a shame you all missed it, but the last two weeks, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, every third grader in Curry County came up to Arizona Pond and learned how to fish, and I believe that almost every single one of them caught a trout up there while they were there. Today, right now, the hatchery manager is over working with some people from the SNAP program, which is special needs adults. He meets them over there on Wednesday morning to work with them, and tomorrow we're hosting the National Resources Day over at the hatchery, where I think it's all the fourth graders from Gold Beach and Port Orford come over for a field trip and learn about different things, geology and fish and habitat and things like that. And the reason I'm here this morning is that we need to reapply to ODFW to get an extension on our permit. From what I've been told, the numbers are the numbers. There's a lot of pages of spreadsheets and leases and maps and plots and everything that all of the hatcheries submit, but something that the people in Salem look for is letters of support from the community. And I've been going around to different places in town who had written letters before and asking them if they would refresh the letter that they had written for us 10 years ago. And that's essentially what I'm here before this board this morning to ask. 10 years ago, the last panel on the letter that I gave you wrote quite a nice letter to the ODFW on our behalf, and I was just coming and hoping that we could count on you for a similar letter this year. If you wanted to change the date and change the names on the bottom, that's fine with us, you know? The letters we have are all 10 years old now, and we thought it would be a good idea to refresh them. So that is what I'm here before you for this morning.
Commissioners, do you have any comments or objections?
Sounds like a good cost to me.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thanks for the work you're doing, and if anybody hasn't been there promoting onsite visits, it's, I believe, historically a 30-year facility. Is that... am I close on that?
Close, yes. It was reconstructed... I believe it was reopened around the early '90s. It's on the original site of RD Ums' first hatchery, so there's some history that goes with this place.
It's a great facility. If you haven't been there, yeah.
So...
We won't give him your phone number, though, but I would love to help him with the letter.
Do you want to take the lead and draft a letter up for us to...
Using this one, can we use...
Sure.
The stuff that's included in this one is all acceptable?
For the next general meeting? Okay.
Is the same man in charge, John Weber?
Excuse me?
John Weber, it says ODFW?
Is it the same?
Yes, yes. John's the... he's the step biologist, that Salmon Trout Enhancement Program. I learned that the other day. But he's the step biologist with ODFW, and he's the one who we work through, we coordinate through, have all of our activities.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. Fully Curry County, John. Thanks, David.
Next one is... Britt Boyce, and it just says... well, it doesn't say the agenda topic, so what is the agenda topic?
Healthy workforce.
Healthy workforce, so that is not on the agenda, correct?
Right.
Okay, I'll fill in... there's an extra charge for us to fill this in, but... so you want to come up and...
You're going to miss out on the food.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Council Huddle. I'm here basically just to pass on some information I received from Oregon Health Sciences University, and Oregon Institute of Occupational Health is putting on a seminar next Thursday at... it's a subset of OHWC. All we need is another acronym. Stands for Oregon Healthy Workforce Center. And the title of the seminar is Creating a Positive Work Environment for Safety and Health, and it's right outside of Salem, Wilsonville. And I received a registration qualifying any government agency for only a $30 per person registration fee instead of a $60 registration. I understand it requires extra effort to travel, but it seems to offer valuable education, and they offer a webinar for only $20. So I just figured I'd make you all aware of that in case it was something that you wanted to do for fun and enjoyment. And the keynote speaker is Tony Biglin, who is a PhD senior scientist at Oregon Research Institute, and he wrote a book called The Nurture Effect. And the program addresses using public health research to improve the workplace and using organizational technology to create a positive environment. And once again, the webinar is only $20, and in person, it's in Wilsonville, Thursday, May 11th, 9 to 3 p.m. That's it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
First time I've ever seen her go under three minutes.
Okay, the next speaker slip is Carolyn Johnson to comment on the public workshop at Floris Lake.
Good morning, Carolyn Johnson, Community Development Director. I wanted to share with you the outcome of the Floris Lake Community Workshop last Thursday. There was a little pre-work that went into that, put it on our website notifying folks that the workshop was going to happen. It was a community workshop, not a board meeting, and it was held last Thursday night at the Langloes Lions Club in Langloes. Over 100 people attended. Pacific High School helped facilitate the meeting. They did a great job, and overall, it was a very good experience. The purpose of the workshop was to fulfill a directive of the last Board of Commissioners who sought to get community input on the Floris Lake lands north and south of Boyce Cove Park. So that was the topic. I will have more information for you on this in the coming days, but I want to let you know that it happened. It seemed to be very well received and very successful. If there's any folks listening or in the audience that want to be added to the email list that's been created for people who want to receive information, I'm downstairs. I'm pretty easy to find to add you to the email list. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
County Council?
So this agenda item is public comments. I think reports like this from staff are better under 12, presentation to the board, and then the board can then move them and take them out of order, but I wouldn't want to encourage all staff members who wanted to communicate to the board to come up during public comments. So I think presentations of the board is more appropriate for staff reports to the board, and if the board wants to take them out of order, they can, like we've done in the past. But for staff to use the public comments to give reports could get out of control, so I just... and take up the public's 30 minutes.
But there's... okay, I hadn't seen it, but you know...
I want to... I just want to go on record.
Okay.
That makes sense to me. I'm very glad to get your report, but yeah, I understand where you're coming from.
And there's no time limit either.
Yes.
Right, and if we're limiting the public to 30 minutes and all of a sudden staff just fills that void, there goes the public's opportunity to comment. So I think that's why we have these agenda items differently. And again, this is the first time we've seen it, but I just want to... I want to nip it in the bud if we can.
Incidentally, I still contend there was 200 people there, and you did a great job facilitating that. I'd be anxious for your additional report down the road.
Yeah, we can work on that one, because if there were only a couple of public comments, like you said, then we'd move it up, because one of the reasons is not to have staff sitting here for an hour or two or three.
I understand that part too, but it's just the way it's presented under public comments. Mr. Chair.
Okay, so to Agenda Item 6, and there are going to be two items now in the consent calendar. Agenda Item 6A, approval of two amendments to the Oregon Health Authority or OHA agreement, and the amendment to Day Wireless Tower Site Management Agreement. Those are the two, 6A and D, that are falling into the consent calendar. So do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with those items as amended?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as amended.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any further comments?
Oh, he had a...
We have...
He had a slip there.
Did we have an... did you fill out a... oh, we did have a...
Yeah.
A slip. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think that slip was filled out after the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, it was just a couple minutes later.
I think it would take a board consensus to hear it.
Okay, okay.
I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Boyce, but I think if we're going to have these rules, we need to... So I think the board has the power to...
I agree. Okay, it came in after, because that's the reason toward the beginning of the meeting, I emphasized a couple of times.
So, Mr. Chair, excuse me.
Correct. Commissioner Boyce?
Oh, I just moved that we hear the last public comment there from, I believe, Mr. Morrow.
Commissioner Gold?
What is it regarding?
The Floris Lake Workshop.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. I'm not, because of the reasons that we're...
Yeah, I got you.
Either have rules and follow them, or we don't. Or we override them by a majority of the Board of Commissioners. So we have two that are saying to allow it, so please come up.
I want to comment, Mr. Chair.
Well, no, 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 he has the floor. He has the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I wanted to essentially thank you for letting Director Johnson do such an amazing job of organizing the workshop that we had up at the Langloes Lions Club, and I will go for roughly 150 people somewhere between... We had 100 chairs set up. It was filled immediately. We had at least 25 around the walls there for the entire duration, plus another 30 or so that wandered through during the course of the meeting. And hopefully, Commissioner Boyce's takeaway was that our community really wants to pursue a conservation approach to the 500 acres at the south end of the lake. We feel as a community that the economic benefits to Langloes would be tremendous, to the park that is already there would be tremendous. Apparently, last year, you made almost $50,000 at that park, and it's because of the beauty of Floris Lake area. And hopefully, that was made clear during that time. I know there are many other options that will be presented to you when Director Johnson does her follow-up with you, but again, our community is encouraging you to deeply consider that. Your next steps, of course, are critical to that path, and the citizens of Langloes and the Floris Lake area are willing to help work with you to come up with a solution that is good for all, not only the community, the conservation approach, but also the budget that you are facing now. We know that part of what is driving the focus on this is the budget concerns, and we feel that there really are economic benefits. It won't be a home run, but I think you can really make choices that'll provide you a long-term cash flow for the county. So thank you, and look forward to your next steps. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the compliment.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
I suspect you came, drove here from Port Orford?
Uh, Langloes.
Langloes, even farther. So being five, six, seven minutes late on getting the slip in, plus this is a new rule, so it's going to take some time for the public to get accustomed to it, and anything we can do to open public comment and encourage those contributions, you know where I stand on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think we followed policy, and we went with the majority of the board.
And when it becomes so rigid that people drive an hour and a half round trip, go back disappointed, it's not good for the process. My personal, but obviously strong opinion. Thank you again.
Okay, so we moved two items out.
Did we vote on the consent calendar? Were we...
Yes, we did.
I think we did.
Okay, thanks. I know we...
Then we had the...
Thank you. Good.
That other card.
I know we had the motion.
Did we have... did we vote on it?
I don't think we...
Oh!
I don't think we voted.
Okay, well, the clerk says we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
I voted. That's all that matters.
Sure.
Okay, two items that were pulled out are three. The first one was Agenda Item 6B, intergovernmental agreement with Gold Beach to provide tourism and administrative services. Commissioner Boyce, you pulled this out, so we'll open it to your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This became a discussion item, our April 28th meeting, so I want to reference this as another IGA agreement, apparently with the city of Gold Beach. And the sequence of what happened here is, yeah, no prior discussion. I'm a fancy word liaison with the Economic Development Department, so I wasn't informed. My background is in tourism for 30 years. I still have a lot of friends and associates around the state, especially around the county, that spend tons of money to bring people into Curry County, Gold Beach, yes, the entire county. So a question for someone as a first priority here is, did this get on the ARS agenda last Wednesday?
It would have been last Wednesday or earlier, because otherwise it would have been shown up as a late submittal for board review. So to answer your question, I could confidently say yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll support that. We would have handled it as a late submittal if it had not been submitted in time, and we can go back and check, but I'm fairly confident that we handled it in a regular process for the agenda prep.
Okay, appreciate that. And the agenda item, if you would scroll, that's on page 15. So if you were to scroll down to page 15, it will show you the Agenda Item Routing Slip.
425.
It was submitted on 425.
I'm satisfied that it was presented in and on time, so we're fine on that. So then we had a special meeting Friday, the 28th, and I ask in that meeting, why are we having a special meeting? I don't recall very many meetings on Fridays the last couple of years.
Was that because the Commissioners could only get together? We had agreed weeks prior to that...
For the 28th meeting?
That each Commissioner was contacted separately, and it turned out... because I was game for Wednesday, but I was told that one or the other, one or both of the other Commissioners could not. The day that worked for all three was...
I'm not complaining, in fact.
Was the 28th. The 20... did we say the 28th? Yeah.
I was wondering...
I think I went through with this once or twice before in a meeting.
I was wondering if Commissioner Boyce was asking a rhetorical question. Were you really looking for an answer from the chair on that particular point?
I took it seriously.
Well, you might recall, I communicated in that meeting. I don't know why we're having a meeting on this rare day, but I'm glad to have it. More opportunities for us to get together, make decisions, dialogue, discussion. You remember that?
Something to that.
You do, thank you.
In fact, I don't remember the day it was mentioned, but...
So with the Community Development Director proposal and with SEDC, the highlighted item I have here is... suggested project, excuse me, for discussion. And number seven on that is tourism reevaluation. So I didn't know that it was going to suddenly be, suddenly come to the board for a proposal, another IGA agreement, with, with whomever, without the bid process. And so at that meeting, I, I voiced opposition for any government agreements. After I told Carolyn Johnson, Director Johnson, excuse me, that you're batting a thousand, then we had number seven. I said, nah, I'm pretty uncomfortable with that, and there's a variety of reasons why. And I appreciate, Mr. Chair, that you opened up the, the discussion process here.
May I make a comment or you want?
Of course, no, of course you can.
Well, you made, you mentioned the IGA and the bid process. I think two things here. Number one is an IGA with a public entity. I don't know that that necessarily applies. Number two, the amount is, was it under ten thousand dollars?
Ninety-six hundred.
So it doesn't apply any, anyway, so.
But, but it was put under the consent calendar, and I had to pull it out so we could discuss it. So in less than one week, actually three days, it comes before, on our agenda, and we're just going to put it under the consent calendar. And had I not pulled it out, we wouldn't be able to discuss this whole process. And I have very strong opinions on why I think this is a bad idea, and I'd like to take the day to communicate those ideas and why I think it's, it's not appropriate for our county right now. And.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Where to start? You know, I had somebody tell me yesterday, why don't we just make this the City of Gold Beach Annex? City Administrator Fritz was in Commissioner Gold's office for a half hour today. I was stopped by her office, I think about a week ago, just to say hi, see how she's doing. When I send her emails, it comes back auto reply. I hear they're short-staffed, and my, my reason for dropping by her office, just truly just to check and see how she's doing. I see her as a key player in, in our county. But hearing that they're understaffed, there has been some tremendous controversy between the county and the city of Gold Beach over the last couple of years. And we're still sitting here with no agreement on the dispatch with the sheriff. And I, I'm not taking sides in this, but I believe the sheriff has done what he can do to promote some, some form of mediation to get this resolved, and.
So we're talking about, excuse me, we've gone to a different subject, correct?
But it's the controversy between the county and the city, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's proper right now. Back to the bid system, maybe it isn't the exact dot the i and cross the t. However, if we can't do, which I believe we can, do the parks website promotion, I don't want to give up our website to anyone. I think it gives the other cities in this county a slight slap in the face. I just, I think it's bad business. I, at a time, we're trying to bring the county together on healthcare, on law enforcement, on these issues, and we want to, we want to give up our website? A lot of work went into that website, and it is not in our best interest to, to give that up. And back to the controversies, one of those, one of those issues was when Gold Be, excuse me, when Curry County used economic development money to develop the county website, the city of Gold Beach got mad, as I understand it, and I think this is well documented. Got upset and turned the county into the state, and the county ruled with it, with, excuse me, the state ruled with the county that we had done the proper procedure there. And so the point is, no workshop, again, no discussion, and we're going to vote on it today or, or we were just going to push it through without, without any dialogue whatsoever. And I, I don't understand why we'd give that up. We can run our tourism promotion through parks. It's had tremendous success. That those people know, it goes hand in hand. And so I'm, I'm, I'm just really opposed to this without more work, without, I, I just don't. There seems to be a bent or a quest to, to get the city of Gold Beach into this building, and I, I think it's a bad approach. And I, Director Johnson has had a pay raise to get all this in, in, in order, and I, I, I don't want those lottery dollars going to the city of Brookings or Gold Beach or anyone else unless we can justify that it is truly in the best interest of the county. We can't do that without discussion. And yeah, if we want, if we want to do the outsource, then we, we can do that through giving other people an opportunity to participate or request to participate. And yes, the sheriff's agreement still not signed. I, I don't understand how that could be.
Sorry.
Go ahead. You can interrupt me, of course.
Well, I, I, county council. I was asking permission, but one question that I have with this is, Gold Beach promotes tourism, I'm assuming for Gold Beach. And in one sense, it seems like we're a competitor with Gold Beach for tourism dollars in the county. In other words, if people have a choice to spend a tourism dollar in the county, on a county facility or a Gold Beach facility, how is Gold Beach going to address that? And I don't know if, I looked at this agreement, and it seemed okay, but you're bringing up a point, and it just seems like this.
Actually, I, I don't want to interrupt, but.
Well, let, let, let's let.
Okay.
I've made, I've made my point. I, I just, I'm trying to see if this agreement, I don't know if I've, I'll look, and maybe Director Johnson knows. Does, does this agreement address conflicts of interest if there's competing dollars for Gold Beach versus Curry County on tourism?
I'd have to look.
Okay. But I'm, I'm just wondering, there might be a way to have those addressed, and I, I didn't, don't recall it being in here. Thank you. And again, I, that's all I had to say, and I just don't know if Commissioner Gold had a question.
Okay.
All right, let's hold up. You, you were, I think, county council.
Do you want me to stay up here?
Well, I just had to question if it, if it was in there.
No, it's not in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me just say that I had some concerns also, that I did do some research on this very issue as to the website. That will be updated, our website by the department there in Gold Beach. They are also involved, Gold Beach is involved in many different areas, and they're promoting all of Curry County. They're involved in Travel Oregon, which gives the South Coast quite a bit of dollars. They're involved in Rural Tourism Studio. They are also involved in Wild Rivers Coast Alliance that comes from Band and Dunes. This promotes tourism as well as economic development. And in their visitor center, and they're the ones that are going to be updating our website, they also advertise all of the definition, or all of destinations on South Coast. So I felt comfortable about this IGA. After talking to Jody, yes, I did talk to her for a half hour. I talked to two other people regarding the same issues, so.
Do you have, do you have concern, Commissioner Gold, that this is, would be viewed as competitive between the communities? And do you feel like the controversy? I'll ask one question at a time, my apologies.
Well, I, I initially had some concerns. That's why I decided to investigate further, and I feel comfortable with it now.
And you don't think the controversies that are, that are well documented in the past raise a red flag to you?
Actually, I talked about some of those conf, uh, controversies, and I'm fine.
And you know they haven't been resolved, though, or at least with the sheriff's agreement?
We're not talking about the sheriff's agreement.
Okay.
I have nothing, you know, this, this is like apples and oranges, so.
Well, the sheriff's agreement is something that maybe the board needs to take a look at and try and help find some mediation, get that resolved, because it is, it is no small issue. Go ahead, Mr. Huddley.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt.
It's okay.
Okay. We, we can't just be jumping to, from one topic subject to another. I guess we can, but there's no purpose served. It's, it's confusing.
Well, the purposes.
I'm not going to, to comment on the website other than, and I, I did this on the record one or two meetings previously, the, the, one of the reasons for this, the travel, and I, the, the travel Curry Coast was not kept up. It was in very inadequate, it was inadequate. It had not been kept up. And I was asked by Director Johnson, oh, three, four, or five weeks ago, you know, for the contact information for VMI Studios, without her in contact, so they could, rather than complain, take it to meet public meetings and complain about how poor it was and how it hadn't been kept up, took the initiative to correct it quietly and move forward. That's what she's done. So I support exactly what she's done here.
You see, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this, and the three-day process we have to make this decision. And we basically have the Parks Department that is most capable and experienced in this to deal with the website. We have the city of Gold Beach where we have a history of controversy that's not healed and not, not been, uh, not been repaired. So it, 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 it's amazing to me that it doesn't send up a caution light to you, to both of you. So I do not want to give up our website. I do not want to give up our own responsible tourist promotion.
We're not giving up our website.
Well.
Just point of order, point of order.
Sorry, Bethan.
You still have the floor, Commissioner Boyce.
We're going to give up control, and, and, and that, that's the responsibility I don't think we should do. Go ahead, Mr. Huddle.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chair.
County Council?
I think under the agreement, the Director of Economic Development and the Community Development Director authorizes the website. So the oversight of the website is still with the county, and the actions of Gold Beach are per authorization of the Community Development Director. So I, I think saying that we're giving up our website, I didn't read that in the agreement. So I'm just legally, I don't, you may mean in a different context, Mr. Commissioner, but technically, legally, we're still in control under this document, I think.
Well, thank you. I'm going to repeat why we would let the lottery dollars go outside of our county employees here when we have very capable people, experienced people, and all we have to do is ask them, all you have to do is ask them. I absolutely am committed to that's the right thing to do and keep it within the county and promote bringing this county together, not competing, not, not just with OCVA, the Oregon Coast Visitors Association, you know, that, that is an entity that's all up and down the Oregon coast. That's controlled by Coos Bay and Newport, and we want our people from the valley coming over. And so that's basically Reeseport Down and Astro Travel Southern Oregon. And I was in the tourism business for thirty-five years, and I've got a little bit of insight of what works, what doesn't. I'm going to conclude, Mr. Chair, by requesting this board, put this off, talk to the Parks people, and don't give up another ten thousand dollars that, that, that should be with our people and our expertise. We have it here. And also, for me not to know till Friday that this is going to be a vote, I don't understand how that works. And that just seems to be the way we do business here, and I'm trying to follow, I'm trying to be respectful, but I don't know why I would have been left out of that. So other than number seven, when we had our meeting the other day, which I appreciated, but I had no idea until that night that it was, that it was going to be on our consent calendar today. So that's too fast for me. And I have one more thing, Mr. Chair, but I'm done with that part of it.
So when you say one more, were you, one more comment on the same topic here on Agenda Item Six?
It's, it's related, but it's not the same topic, Mr. Chair.
That would probably be appropriate for Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting.
It's a separate topic.
Either way, it'd be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wondering, okay.
So I just have one question of county council. You mentioned that there was no conflict. What was the conflict clause? Would we suggest adding a conflict clause in there? Would you suggest that?
If I'm not mistaken, and again, it seemed like the last agreement we considered with Gold Beach was to have them act as our administrative supervisor, pro tem in the county commissioner's office. And if I'm not mistaken, that document did have a conflict of interest. They, there was some discussion about it at that time, and they had even reviewed it with their attorney and included a clause. So I would be more comfortable if we had something to address that, because it, it could come up, and it's very common, to, to have at least a dispute resolution clause in there, so.
And I think the, and I'm not positive, but I think that came up, as I recall, because the original IGA didn't have a clause in it, and that's how, that's how it initially came up.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. Do you have any?
No problem.
Problem with that?
So, so if, I suppose if there would be a motion, it would be a motion to approve the agreement with the inclusion of a conflict of interest clause.
Do we have a motion to do that?
I move that we approve the agreement with the inclusion of the conflict of interest clause.
Do we have a second? I'll second it.
Can I speak to the motion, please?
You want to just identify yourself?
My name is Carolyn Johnson, Community Development Director. I'm supporting what you're doing. I'd also like a couple of minutes to speak after you conclude your deliberations on this, on this same topic.
Okay.
Well, I, I think you would speak before the vote would be how I think it usually works.
Okay, I will. I'd like to share that, but this is, I, I want to talk about a little bit of chronology, and it's not really pertinent to the motion per se.
Okay, thanks. All right, well, fair enough.
I don't want to.
It's up to the board.
Okay, then.
Not a legal requirement, I apologize.
Well, if it was.
I don't want to mess up your rhythm.
And to the, to the agreement, I would say, I would go with what county council said, but if it's not, I would say, do we have any further discussion? We'll, we'll pick that up after.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyce?
So wouldn't that be enough reason to delay the vote if we have conflict of interest doc, wording that we're, is in question here?
This is not uncommon that we'll add basic language or changes to something during a meeting. It's just not uncommon, so no. Not in my opinion. Any, any other comments or?
Not this time, thank you.
Okay, call for the question?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Okay, now to your, to your comments, please.
I, I just wanted to go back on the chronology of this, because I don't want Commissioner Boyce to believe that he has been left out of the loop. The staff report for the meeting of last Friday was made available on Monday, the twenty-third, or Monday, the twenty-fourth. It was published on the website, and I presume that the BACH office trans, transmits that, those to the board as well. So it was available at that time. And the other thing I'm noticing, and I think this is just an oversight, because it's a little bit of an unusual situation. If you look at your Agenda Routing Slip towards the bottom, Part V, anytime your commission, one of your commissioners has a, a department that they are liaison to, the report goes to them before the, the BACH office puts it on. And I don't, I, I think it's a little bit unusual, but my department, now that it is taking, taking on economic development, I'm split between two commissioners. One commissioner for economic development, one commissioner for community development. And as I look at this ARS, I see that it, either it wasn't routed to Commissioner Boyce because there's no checkmark that you had reviewed it or knew about it ahead of time, or it was just an oversight. So I'm, I'm just, I just want to put it out there that procedurally it might be helpful to remember that in the future. And it would also be helpful if I would make it apparent to the BACH office that make sure you get this to both commissioners.
Just to county council.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just kind of to clarify the process, after items are submitted, they go to a review where we rely on the commissioners to go in there and, and review them and indicate. So they're technically not routed around.
Correct.
After they're submitted. They're put in a folder that all the commissioners can review, so it's up to the commissioners to review those.
No, no real correlation to that whatsoever, and you may read it, you may, I know Commissioner Gold checks most of them. You know, it, in the past had been typically, but not always, you know, to be checked by the commission liaison. But there's no fast rule there. Recently, I haven't checked most of, of mine when I've gone.
Yeah, I, I think.
But I, I review them.
I think you have double duty to work with two liaison commissioners now.
Well, I do, and I, I apologize to you for not pointing this out. I, I made some presumptions that I shouldn't.
Well, I could, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
I could be a little oversensitive based on what happened back in our first meeting with the IGA agreement for the BACH office administration through the city of Gold Beach, and in my background in tourism, so yeah, I think I'm, we all think we're great marketers, I realize, but I have had that experience, and it, it has some value to the county, I hope, over time. And then just with City Administrator Fritz ignoring my emails, ignoring my visit, and they ignored me today, that's not a good feeling to know that I'm going to be able to work with her. It only takes two to get her in this building. And so that, that, that might be why I'm. And so that might be why I'm a tad suspect here and concerned. So I do appreciate your apology, and I'll follow through to, but no, I did not get the, did not receive the email. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
County Council?
Well, it seems like if Commissioner Boyce is the liaison to this part of Director Johnson's workload, and Director Johnson will be working with Gold Beach as the administrator of this contract and agreement, that it seems like Commissioner Boyce should have a direct, you know, pipeline now to Gold Beach, its administrator, and the work being done under this contract, you'll be able to kind of oversee it and kind of shepherd this through to your satisfaction, hopefully, so.
Could I make one more?
There's an opportunity here. That's all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I just noticed that the contract could be terminated by either party at any time. So I think that's important to note. So if their work is not sufficient, then we could terminate that contract.
I have just, I have just one comment, and it's a general comment to some comments that Commissioner Boyce has made. I intentionally have not responded or interrupted, but I would caution not to make general accusations with no backup authority proving those accusations. It's just not a good thing to get into. It's just not.
Well.
So if you're, you know, if.
You know, show me the respect of, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Show me the respect of being specific on what I promoted that is not factual.
Well, I will review the video in this thing, and I will see probably three or four or more statements you've made or accusations that there was no, no backup, no proof, and that.
So can you give me one specific?
Pardon me?
Can you give me one specific?
You've made, again, I didn't write them down, I didn't intentionally interrupt and comment, but even accusations that the city administrator of Gold Beach didn't do this or didn't do that. It's that type, you know, if they didn't, then give me a, prove it, you know, or think twice, because is there really any purpose by even making such a statement in a meeting like this? And I think the latter is true. I don't think there's any purpose.
Goodness.
So that's, those are my.
I appreciate your willingness to keep the dialogue going here, and I think it's important. Were you aware that there was conflict between the city and Gold Beach? Excuse me, the county and Gold?
I'm not even gonna go there.
Why would you not answer?
Because it's a matter of opinion, you talk to two different people, you're gonna have two different opinions.
Well, if the city of Gold Beach turned the county into the state, I think that's gonna be very easy to verify.
Well, okay, now, now that was one. Then you should have that document if you're gonna make that accusation. County Council?
Point of order. I mean, you're kind of talking over, you're a little bit talking over each other, I think, just the rules, you know, but at the same time, Commissioner Boyce has, again, talked about a report to the state. I think it would be fairly easy to find out, and if you need any assistance with that, we'll be happy to help there.
Thank you.
But that's one.
If I were to make an accusation like that, before I would dare do that in a public meeting or privately, I would have the document and know that my statement was correct.
Well, sure, but you're attributing your own personal comfort level to Commissioner Boyce.
But in a public meeting, I would definitely.
Again.
Do it rather than make an, to my opinion, that's an unfounded allegation until it's approved.
Well, it isn't with the Sheriff's Department, so I will, that's well documented, and incidentally, Council, Huddle, you've been involved in that, and you've done, I've appreciated what I've been able to read that you have reviewed, and again, well documented. So I will do my homework, and I will see what I can offer to the board that's legitimate, valid regarding the conflict and the concern I have in addition to that, where we might be headed with this.
Okay, so let's move on to what was Agenda Item and had been pulled, but Agenda Item Six C, the payroll distribution change for Sheriff John Ward. And that was to follow the, you know, Six, what pulled Six B. So, and I think that Commissioner Gold, you pulled.
Yes, I was the one that pulled that. In doing a little bit of research, when someone retires, which is what Sheriff Ward did, I believe in January, they no longer have to pay 6%. They're 6% in PERS. The county currently is paying 15.98%. That's their contribution to PERS. So I checked with several other governmental agencies to see what their position was on paying into the pocket of the retired person the amount that they would put for PERS, which amounts to $1,148 per month in the sheriff's case. And in both instances where I talked to those individuals who has, who have employees who are retired from PERS, they do not give those employees money. So I think I would be advocating my fiduciary responsibility if I voted for this. That would really mean that he would have close to a 22% raise.
Well, that was the extent at this point of your comments?
That's it.
Do you have any comments, Commissioner Boyce?
Boy, good work, by the way, interesting. You know, law enforcement, Curry County, the police chief in Brookings, who has an incredible resume, has had incredible success, not unlike our sheriff, who gets paid substantially more. And, well, I didn't sleep about three nights ago because it was, there was a rumor going around that Sheriff Ward was gonna resign. It was like, wake up in the middle of the night going, oh my gosh, we can't afford that right now. I'm not saying he has said anything like that, or, other than it was a bad dream, because I care that much about what happens in this county and public safety and where we might be headed and the responsibility we have as commissioners. So I'll just conclude here with, I'm going to support this. I'm assuming that, well, I know County Council has spent time on this and does not see it as a issue of concern legality-wise, and so, yeah, it would be very difficult for me to oppose this, very difficult. And thanks for pulling out a consent calendar, because we need this discussion, by the way.
Mr. Chair, could I say one more thing?
Excuse me, were you through?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gold?
There are several other employees here who are currently retired, and if we were to do it for one employee, then we should do it for all employees who are retired and not taking PERS, but we could give them their portion of what the county would pay into PERS. So I just, I think we'd be setting a bad precedent.
Okay, Commissioner Boyce?
Just quickly, this is not costing the county anything. It's not, no, it's, I could be wrong on that, but I'm almost positive that this is, this is pretty secure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm not sure. I have two documents on this, but do you want, you want me to make my comments first, Sheriff, or you wanna make yours?
Go ahead.
It's your, okay, it's your call.
Go ahead.
Okay. I don't, I know that there was a comment that the sheriff had retired. I don't know if that's accurate or inaccurate, because all I read here on the agenda routing slip was that Sheriff Ward's salary was budgeted to include, this is on a background, and it's on the packet, okay, was to, budgeted to include PERS, that's the Public Employees' Retirement System, contribution of $1,148 per month. He retired from PERS effective 1/1/17, so he does not receive that portion of his compensation package, period. He requests an equitable transfer of that allocated budget item from PERS to his salary retroactive to January 2017 and going forward as sheriff. It concludes this action would not change the base salary of the sheriff for any future person in this position. This would also not change the budget. Okay, now, my comment, when I saw that, it rang, pulled some memories up from correspondence that I'd had some years back with one of the representatives with PERS. And I did locate that, and then I'll reference one other document to show my reasons for this, for my comments. That, this was back from Deborah Hembray, H-E-M-B-R-E-E, in June 10th, 2013. And it had to do with a comment that she'd made in a correspondent site was having with her. And she says, "If I understand your question correct, or your question correction," I think she means correctly, "you are asking how much the 2013-2015 employer contribution rate is paying for benefits for employees who are no longer working in PERS-covered positions." The answer to that question is that, on a system average basis, about 40% of the 2013-15 Tier 1, Tier 2 employee rate is to cover the unfunded liability for retired and inactive members. What this, and this was very, I was surprised, and yet, when she explained it further to me, I wasn't, because what she was saying is that, basically, it doesn't, these payments or these contributions from the county don't go into a separate account just for that individual. They go into a huge account for all PERS members, retired or otherwise. Okay? And the reason that it does is that it takes, as of 2013-15 PERS contributions, she explained, it takes about 40% of that total contribution to keep the public employees' retirement system from basically imploding and crashing, because it does not have the funds to pay the retired employees. And 40% of those payments from current active employees are used to pay the retirees, to keep the system from not crashing, okay? If you go also, and here's another source for this document that anyone can pull up, this is called PERS, it's P-E-R-S, and then it's a colon, by the numbers. This happens to be the July 2013 one that went with the email. And on page 14 of PERS by the numbers in the actuarial accrued liabilities, it says approximately 68% of PERS total accrued liability is for members who are no longer working in PERS-covered employment, retirees and inactives. That's 68%. As a result, approximately 40% of an employer's contribution rate is associated with these groups. In other words, it takes 40% to keep this system from literally imploding. So my comment then, based on what I saw here, was that, in not knowing whether this is done frequently, infrequently, or never, as far as this request, I don't know. To request 100% is basically two things. Number one, the contribution from the county ultimately is going to result in about 60% going to the particular individual, whoever it might be, okay? Not 100%. Number two, that that would increase by, I don't know, $500 or so dollars, you know, over that of the 40, whatever 40% of $1,148 is. Plus, to do it that, this way, it increases also, it increases your rate for retirement purposes, and I know I've read many different PERS articles on that. I'm not up on it enough today to start citing things, but typically, when you do cash out on the retirements, it's normally the last three years, and there's stories of, you know, different employees, not just in Oregon, in other states also, trying to see how they can get their last two or three years up high, so it put them in a higher retirement funding for the remainder of their natural lives. But, so for that, for those reasons, I do not support this at all, and certainly not for the full amount, because of what I just explained. And Sheriff Ward, you have the floor?
Good morning, Commissioner. Sheriff Ward. First of all, you know, I was appointed sheriff back in 2014, and my term ended as of December 31st, and then I was re sworn in as the elected sheriff. But prior to that, I retired from PERS. If you think about it, every year, the elected official compensation board gets together, and they make a decision on what the salary should be for the sheriff. Well, this year was, I believe, was $89,000. I've been, the sheriff's been paying for the last 10 years the same amount for the last 10 years. No increases except for, except for two little colas in two different years. The sheriff had nothing. I'm irresponsible, I carry the most liability, the most responsibility of any county employee as an elected official. Now, Commissioner Gold, you mentioned something about if we do it for one, we have to do it the other. That's not true. The ones that retired in law enforcement, there's, it's a law, and with PERS, that if you're in a county under less than $75,000, you can retire and go back to work the next day, and it doesn't affect your PERS. As far as the deputies did that, and there's sheriffs and deputies all across the state are doing this, as far as the deputies, they won't get extra money because they're on a contract with certification purposes, they're in a union, so they have to abide by the union wages with their certification. I'm elected, it's different. And I'm not asking for, to get anything other than what is actually my compensation piece with PERS, my whole compensation package. This doesn't cost the county any extra money. I've talked to Julie Swift about it, I've talked to County Council about it, they're both in agreement that it's, there is no issue with this. So my question to you is, why not, when, like last year, the compensation board said, hey, you know, sheriffs should be paid 70 or 86,000 or something like that, within 30 seconds, you made a decision, I wouldn't have any money, we're not gonna do it. But yet, this last year, I know of three big raises in county department heads, that people got pretty good stamp raises, and here I am, still stuck in the same boat. I'm gonna ask County Council for his opinion on this, since he helped me with this, with this routing slip.
Well, thanks, Sheriff. If, Mr. Chair, could I?
County Council?
Thanks. So, again, my review as County Council is whether something is legal to do or not, and I think it is legal for the county to do this. And again, the idea of the equitable share, it's a pseudo-legal concept based in fairness, and the idea there is what the sheriff described. And I know, Mr. Chair, you mentioned, the way I understand it is, we are making a contribution to PERS under the sheriff's salary, and what you're saying is, of that contribution, 40% of that is used to go to somebody else, but he doesn't get it all. I don't know how that math works from PERS, but I would like to think as a PERS employee that if there's, you know, a PERS contribution made for me, it will be available to me 100%, even if out of that 100%, somebody else has to pay 40 of it, like a, so, right, and that's where.
That's not what I understand as far as the numbers, that's not.
Well, what I didn't hear that lady, what I didn't hear in that email and that description was that her say, if the county makes a PERS contribution on my behalf, I'm only gonna see 60% of it. The fact that 40% has to be paid by somebody else doesn't mean that I'm only gonna get 60. It means I'm, so what the sheriff's point is that he's going to still, and... and, I'm sorry, I'm really stepping out. Louise might have some information on this, she's our county accountant, but, again, I didn't hear that person say that, when a county makes a PERS contribution, that employee only sees sixty percent of it. I think it said, somebody else has to pay part of it, but, anyway, and I don't have the benefit of that until just today, so, I'll apologize for that.
And there's also to that, and then will it count...
But to me, to me, what I asked was, you know, and what I had heard was that, under the sheriff's, you know, salary, this was a budgeted portion of that, and so it wouldn't change the sheriff's salary and compensation budget. So, those are really my short analysis. I didn't have a chance, obviously, to analyze the statements that you were making, but...
Well, and I didn't have them until this morning, I just pulled them up this morning, and did not know until back in 2013 that was the case. I'd understood that everything went into an individual's account, they said, oh no, it goes into a pool. Plus, also on this, you have, as that increases on the dollar wages, you also have the contribution for Social Security. So, everything there is an extra seven point six five percent also.
Right, that's different, but yeah, the PERS, I didn't see it, how it would affect his PERS, because he's already retired from PERS, but Social Security, another matter. I don't know what his status is there.
Identify yourself.
Louise Calstrom, County Accountant. So, just to be clear, the amount somebody gets from PERS is based on their years of service, and their salary, I think, is averaged over the three years, either the highest three years that you were paid during your service under PERS. So, it doesn't, the pool amount, what they're saying of the forty percent and everything is the unfunded liability part of PERS. It really doesn't have anything to do with an individual's account and how much they get when they retire. It's only a part of the big pool, the unfunded liability that PERS has, because the unfunded liability is, is everybody who qualified for PERS, retired today, how much would not be funded? And that's basically forty percent in 2013. So, and then, just to, just to be clear, there is a slight amount that would be added to the cost, if you do the, exactly, the eleven forty-eight, which is the Social Security portion, would be added to that, so the cost of the district would be a little bit more than the eleven forty-eight.
And, Mr. Chair, and for the sheriff, thank you. I did tell the sheriff this would have to be a board decision, so, again, that's why we're here today, but I felt it would be legal for the board to do, Mr. Chair, and that's, but it's a, it's a decision for the board on the policy matters and the numbers.
Now, have you retired? Did you retire? I guess, because I don't want to make that assumption that you were technically...
Retired from PERS. Like I say, at the end of my term as the appointed sheriff, I was done, my new term started as elected sheriff, I was sworn in after, for January 2nd. I retired December 31st, my first day of retirement was the first. I can go right back to work on that same date, which I was elected and sworn in as the new sheriff.
So, you did retire?
From PERS.
Now, when we say from PERS, but did you retire as a sheriff? How, you can separate just PERS in a retirement, is that correct? Because I don't...
There has to be a separation, but, you know, I contacted County Clerk, I talked to state elections, everything's warranted, like the other sheriffs that are doing that, and quite a few other deputies as well.
Can I make one other comment?
Commissioner Gold?
There is a law that states, if there's a county that's a small county, then PERS people who have retired can actually come back and work full-time. In bigger areas, they cannot, there's a limit. So, in the two entities that I checked, where they have PERS retirement people coming back and working full-time, they did not pay those individuals the amount from PERS. And so, basically, what I was told, this would be like double dipping, you're getting your retirement, plus you're getting your salary check, so...
Well, I wouldn't call it double dipping, you earned those...
Oh, I'm not saying you don't earn it, I'm just saying that's...
I couldn't live on just what retirement was, because it's not that much. You know, I haven't been paid, my three highest years were when I was a sergeant, you know, that's what they computed it on. As a sheriff, you know, I make, basically, less than what I did as a sergeant, so, and when, seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and then you look at the chief of police in Brookings, it's getting almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, all I'm asking is just comparable money that was, my compensation packet, just be reallocated into my salary. It's budgeted for, if I was to leave for some reason, if something happened to me, and another, somebody had to be taken over, I don't want them be, you know, having, not having their ability to have PERS, because it's not budgeted for. You know what I'm saying?
I just wanted to, Louise Calstrom...
Just identify yourself again, please.
Louise Calstrom, County Accountant. I just wanted to make a comment about the PERS retirement rules, is that, if you retire from PERS, in most cases, you can only work half-time. So, I mean, it's a fiscal year, so if you work, if you retired in, if you retire, no, it's a calendar year, so if you retired in July, you could work the whole year, because you're only working a half-year and then a half-year. But, you can only work half-time once you retire from PERS. However, there's a special rule that Sheriff Ward was talking about, which says that, in certain circumstances, you can work full-time and stay on your PERS retirement. So, he can retire from PERS and work one hundred percent of the time also.
Which I wouldn't have jeopardized anything, if that wouldn't been the law in the case.
Yeah, because otherwise, you couldn't do that.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Boyce? Well, gotta take care of the people that take care of us, and this is a comment around the state of Oregon, so I'm sure it's, just to support Council Huddle's work there. My reference to the city police chief, I'm happy for him, in all sincerity, I want to see that equity come up to all of our top law enforcement people. And that may not happen the next two or three years, but that is gonna be an absolute focus that I have. And when you look at the list, what the sheriff has to do compared to, nothing minor about the state and city police, but they basically have three things that they have to do. The sheriff, and you mentioned, you mentioned your liability, responsibility as sheriff a minute ago. I was reminded at County College, I hadn't read this for probably twenty years, but the list of what the sheriff is responsible to do, and most of that is mandated, as you well know, it is, it is a tremendous amount of work and responsibility. So, I don't want to state the obvious, but just a reminder that the sheriff's department, especially when it comes to the rural exposed areas we have, you're seeing around the entire state of Oregon, it is, it is just a lot of responsibility, so, that's, that's my opinion on that, thank you.
And I understand, Sheriff Ward again, the elected compensation board this year, well, recommended a raise to eighty-nine thousand. I'm still at seventy-five. This would get me close to that, but it's not gonna cost the county any extra money. If it did, whatever, take that out, I don't care, but at least I just want the equitable payment for what my compensation package would be. Julie, do you have anything to add to that?
Julie Swift, payroll and HR coordinator. I worked with the sheriff on this concept, because it is budgeted monies. I understand that maybe only forty percent, you know, forty percent make cover the unfunded liability, that doesn't make a difference in what we would have to contribute for him. And that rate was at eighteen point nineteen percent currently, so, we just did the math and took eighteen point nineteen percent of the salary, or of the salary and would add it to the wages. Legally, as County Council said, it's not illegal. He is allowed to work full-time, and without the PERS contributions going in, I don't see why he shouldn't still receive that same compensation that's been budgeted.
Mr. Chair, one more. When they say full-time, I do a lot more than full-time, I'm twenty-four-seven. I go out on numerous calls, weekends, search and rescues, I mean, I'm there, so I just want to be, have a little bit of compensation for that.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the sheriff gets less than our planning director, annual basis. I don't understand that.
I don't have the master payroll in front of me, so I can't even comment, think to comment on that. Do you, are you...
Is that accurate? I'd really like to know that, because I don't want to promote that information, but I...
Would you do us a favor, just to verify? Because this would be another example of making a statement, if I made that statement, I'd have the master payroll right here, I'd know what I was saying.
I don't need to be corrective, Mr. Chair, we can, we can get you your information, I don't shoot from the hip.
Do you want to come up, please?
Louise Calstrom, County Accountant. I get, I think my comment is that, I think too much emphasis is being put on the way they came up with this payroll adjustment, which was to stay within the budget, and the stay within the budget was the difference between what he was budgeted for as a salary, and that salary including a PERS contribution. So, I think it's more that the sheriff is asking for an increase in salary that stays within budget, really doesn't have anything to do with PERS at all, except for he retired and there's no longer that cost to the district, so, this pay increase would not cost the district any more money than it's already paid, or any more money than it has already budgeted for. So, I'm kind of confused about the, the PERS reference so much, when it's really just in the payroll adjustment based on a cost savings, that, so that, all he's asking for is to stay within budget, but still get a pay raise. That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
I just, we'll wait a minute here until Julie Swift comes back.
As far as, Sheriff Ward again, as far as, you know, who gets paid what, and I don't really care what other people get paid, and just based on what is right and what is fair.
Julie Swift, that statement is not correct. The only two department heads that, excuse me, are in excess of the sheriff are the roadmaster and county council. The others are below.
My apologies to the board and the citizens of the county. What we do know is that Director Johnson got seven hundred, gee, maybe I better double-check this, but I saw it, seven hundred dollar a month raise. You haven't gotten a raise in ten years. So, I think that's the point here. So, again, Mr. Chair, my apologies. Mrs. Swift, can I ask where the director is in that sequence? She's paid less than the sheriff?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Base salary?
So, it goes, it would go, compared to the sheriff, juvenile director is seventy-five one thirty-one, community development director is seventy-three nine fifty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And there again, you look at the amount of people who is underneath that office, planning commission, I don't know, maybe two or three people, I have forty-five, about forty-five positions.
Well, I think the accountant, Accountant Calstrom, you know, took the PERS out of it for a comparison, and said, basically, just look at it as a pay raise.
Could I just make one comment?
Commissioner Gold?
I don't know whether this is the place to be setting up pay raises, should that be happening during the budget process, or, I have no idea, I've never been part of pay raise things.
I agree with, I think that's a reasonable question, and I'm not, if we're going to do that, I think we discuss this as a pay raise, you know, if we want to put PERS out, I'm curious, just as a future, you know, and I know County Council has a lot of things on his plate, okay? But just to put it, as a, to do, way down on the priority list, I'm curious a little bit more, but not too far down, County Council, on the forty percent and how that actually does work, because it, you know, in my, the email correspondence that I referenced, I had about eight different emails with this gal, because it is so complicated, as far as how they, that stuff's all calculated, but...
I wrote down her name, Hembray, I think it was.
And I'll give, you know, give you the, certainly the email, you know, but if she's even there, you know, that's three, four, four years ago, too. I'm not prepared at this meeting to, you know, if we want to move it out that way, which I think was a good way to look at it, put the PERS aside. I didn't know you'd retired, okay? And to deal with this as a separate item during the budget process, I think that could be a very good place to do it, but I'm not, I'm just, as one commissioner, I'm not prepared to approve that during this meeting.
I just think we need to look at the whole thing, the whole budget as a whole.
And we take the, I use the Social Security, too, not to get us sidetracked, but that's another seven point six five percent.
Well, don't forget that the compensation packet for the sheriff should at least be the same, or, I mean, it should be higher, but don't take the PERS out of it, and the wages, because if something happens, me, you know, the next person coming in is not gonna get that, that budgeted person. We're only talking about, you know, it was a special deal because of the situation, that the way it was written up, I could say, we don't believe it's gonna cost the county any money.
You mentioned a compensation, I hadn't seen that on the compensation package, but that's already out, or...
Are you talking about the past compensation...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the compensation recommendation, recommendation, you mentioned...
The last recommendation.
Is that the last one, this, this year?
This year, I just got...
I haven't seen that at all.
I had an email of it, that said, which, what they were...
Were you in an email?
Well, based on what it was recommended, somebody saw, was sitting here, took notes, and it was sent to me, so this is what it was...
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, and I don't even know the timing, how that typically works, because we had it before the fact this year for a change, which is really where it belonged, as far as their meeting, I just didn't know that they'd made a decision or...
I wasn't able to be here at the meeting, because I was in a meeting with OSSA in Hood River, when you guys were having that, on the twenty-fourth, I believe it was. And, but there was somebody at the meeting that took the notes and let me know what the numbers were.
So, I mean, we could, you know, do we, I've stated my position, but we could certainly, you know, at this point, have we had enough conversation where we can ask for a motion? Or, Commissioner Boyce?
I'm satisfied with the discussion we had.
So, do I have a motion to approve this as shown and discussed, or...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll distribution change for Sheriff Ward.
Do we have a second?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Guys, for lack of a second, and I would encourage that the subject should be discussed Agenda item seven, administrative actions, appointments, there are none. There's no separate scheduled public hearing under agenda item eight, proclamations, resolutions, legislative actions, agenda item nine, there are none. There's no separate scheduled public hearing under Agenda Item Eight, proclamations, resolutions, legislative actions, Agenda Item Nine, there are none.
I'll have just a little bit on that later on, Mr. Chair.
You want to do that during Commissioner's comments, then?
Yes, please.
New business, there is no new business. Old business, Agenda Item 11A, ordinance establishing office and authority of county administrator. County Council? You head the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. So this is a follow-up. It's on old business, because it's an item that we've been talking about really close to since the beginning of the new year. And this is, after we did our last work session, the board directed me to go review other counties, county administrator positions, and then to reformat our job description. And so I did both of those, and in the AGRS, it summarizes it, my review of the other county job descriptions that, you know, that ours met or exceeded the standard of, you know, what we would call the industry. The job description that you do have was modified with the assistance of the Community Development Director, Johnson. And it more closely tracks the draft ordinance that did seem to meet more or less positive indications from the board. So the, the, there are still, the reason why this is not brought for the board for a decision today is because I think after the last discussion, and even today, there are still, I think, two questions for the board in this. And one of them involves me directly, and it's found on page 34 and 35, I think, of your agenda packet. And it's under Powers and Duties of the County Administrator. And it's got a page number one at the, on the text in there. But it talks about, and then if you go to the top of the page number two, which is maybe the top of page 35, okay, that's 34. But it says, uh, county administrator will be responsible for the following functions, and it says, directing all activities of county-appointed administrative departments, select, appoint, supervise, dismiss all county administration staff and county employees. And then, again, this was borrowed from another county. It says, the county administrator has no such power over the county council or an elected county officer. So, so that's one of the, I think, the remaining questions. This singles out county council as not being subject to the hiring and firing power of a county administrator, but only directly to the board. The disadvantages for the board on something like that is you have a different set of rules applying to one particular employee. The other thing about it is, if, if one of the real concepts was to streamline government and take away from the board the ins and outs of personnel matters, you would still have one big one still hanging out there. So there's an advantage to the board to putting the county council under the county administrator's hiring and firing power. The disadvantage is that, as legal counsel, my rules of professional conduct require me to answer to the highest authority of the county, and then to the other officers as delegated. And the rub would come if there was a difference of opinion between the county administrator and the board. I would answer to the board, but at the same time, the county administrator could, could hire and fire me. So it's, it, I think that's the rare occasion, the rare instance, so... And where I came from, by analogy, we had a city manager, and the city attorney was hired and fired by the city manager, but nevertheless, my duties were still the same. My ultimate responsibility was to the organization and the highest authority in the organization, which at that one was the city council. And it, um... And one of the, the other thing would be currently, and this would be for the board, it's a choice. The board, I think, has enjoyed a direct, one-on-one access to me. That access would likely be changed. Maybe not, but likely be changed if you had an administrator. And those are some considerations. So I would just be looking for direction from the board after discussion today, and maybe further questions after that, after I've given that brief presentation of the two different sides of it, whether the board wants to take county council out of there. Now, this also says that it has no power over an elected county officer, but it leaves open the idea that the county administrator would then have those hiring and firing powers over the employees of the other elected officers. Now, there would also have to be big changes to our personnel rules. Because the personnel rules have the elected officers acting as administrative department heads of the employees. The advantages and disadvantages of that are, you know, those, and again, there's a special statute for the sheriff, so I, I don't think any of this would apply to the sheriff. We could, we could carve out the sheriff separately. But there are no other statutes like the one that exists for the sheriff for the other elected officials. The advantage for the employees would be that their, their, their boss would be a county administrator, and it wouldn't be an elected person, no offense. But there has been some, there has been some, some-
No offense, ma'am.
There has been, not intended. There has been some examples where you could have a department that is run by an elected official. I'm talking like an assessor or a clerk or something like that. And in one case, it was a district attorney's office. And a new elected official came in and wanted to really change the employees. And so, so those employees basically served at the, at, at, under the direction of a, of an elected official who could change, versus if you have a county administrator. You know, county administrators can change, too. There's two sides of that. It's just, it's just a question for the board. I, my, my analysis is it can be done either way. The board could delegate these powers to a county administrator. They could leave them as our personnel rules are with those department heads. So those, to me, that to me is probably the, the biggest issue here. The other, one other sentiment, I think, that Commissioner Gold voiced at the last meeting was that we could hire an interim county administrator if we got this ordinance on the books. And that person could, you know, get started on addressing some of the issues that the board has identified need is addressing. I think that's permissible if we did create this position. What would happen is the ordinance would create the position and then delegate those powers. Now, we could also change that by making this ordinance effective on a future date to give the board time and a deadline to get that, and then the board, if they weren't meeting that deadline, could, could do that. So what I'd recommend is that if the board wants to consider this, that we make it effective at a future date, I believe that the board could do an interim, you know, without this, but but at the same time, having this adopted, effective at a future date. The acting county administrator would, would have all the powers of the permanent county administrator, and this is a common provision here, except an acting county administrator, because of their temporary nature, shall have no power to terminate an employee except by order of the board. So that goes to those, which I, I think the employment powers of this county administrator are some of the, some of the more-
Sticky?
Well, sticky, yeah, important, and, and maybe common and frequent issues on that. So so those are really the questions I would have, if the board has any questions after looking at this, and if I was clear, if I clouded it even further for you. But I think the issues are county administrator authority over the other employees, county council, and, and then the elected officials' employees.
Before we open this to the commissioners, I'm going to ask Dave a question. Dave, you had wanted to comment. Do you want to wait until you hear the commissioner's comments? Do you want to comment now? It's your call. You make the call.
Let me make my comment then.
Okay.
Thank you. Dave Barnes again. I've been listening since the beginning of the year. This is a newly-impounded board. And, you know, you've just finished four months in office. And one of the major themes of that four months has been getting somebody to do your work for you. You know, you, I've read the paperwork, and it says here that we'll be, to hire a county administrator, you're going to be giving away all of your administrative and executive, executive functions. Mr. Huddle himself, in the last workshop meeting, said you'll be giving many, 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 he used the word, three times, of your jobs away.
Exactly. Sorry, multiple lists in the thing besides three.
Right, but, you know, you, um, essentially, you're going to become figurehead. You're going to become ceremonial, is what you're looking to do. You know, you're going to go to meetings, you're going to go to parties, you're going to come here and you're going to rubber stamp stuff. I, I highly disagree with what you're talking about doing. You know, you were all elected to run this county. We elected you because of your vision, and because of what you said you wanted to do in this county. And I don't think that handing it off to a county administrator is what we elected you for. I believe that if you're going to do this, if, number one, it is something that should go back to the voters, and the voters should get to pick who their county administrator is going to be, who shares their vision with them. I've seen some horrors around here in terms of municipal and other county and other state administrators. You know, and you don't want one of those, you know? A good administrator is good, a bad administrator is absolutely horrible. But for the money you're talking about, if to get a decent administrator, salary fringes, benefits and perks, you're looking at $125,000 to $150,000 a year. If you spend less than that, you get what you pay for, and I'm warning you right now, you're not going to be happy with it. You'd hire two sheriff's officers for what you're talking about getting this for. You go into your departments now, and you're telling them you want 30 and 60% reductions in their budget, but at the same time, you're telling your department heads that we're going to hire a babysitter, who's going to be the highest-paid employee in the county, to come in, because we don't want to have to be bothered with being the minutia of administratio. This is what you were hired to do, you know? If you're going, if you don't want to do it, please, let the, ask the county, ask the voters if they want, you know, if, what they think about it. You are essentially talking about changing the entire way this government is run here in Curry County. And I think that that's something for more than this board. I think that should go before the voters. Thank you.
Dave, you want to, hang on a minute. Do either one of you want to make a comment, or, to that or not?
Well, my comment would be, I've talked to many, many voters, and they think that administrator would be more efficient. The, the commissioners wouldn't be just figureheads. They would be working on policies that would lead and guide the county, lead, lead and guide that administrator. Their main job is going to be to oversee that administrator and make things run well.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, but having read what you, read the packet and read the job description and read the responsibilities, that's not, I do not believe that to be a correct statement. You are asking for somebody to come in and do all the administrative, all of the executive, and all of the planning, long-term and short-term. That leaves you three nothing to do but come here twice a week and rubber stamp what that administrator gives you. I've, I've been through enough of this. I've seen enough meetings. I've been to enough different public bodies that I've seen the way this happens, and I just, I beg to disagree with you, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Boyce, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last time we were on this subject, I passed out a news article from Clatsop County that highlighted there are nine different county administrators in 15 years. And it's been, so the, so the documentation is, it's, it's out there, and it's I think they're related to that. The concern I have, and you touched on it a little bit, Council Huddle, when it, when the position summary says, shall have control and supervision of all county administrative departments, divisions and offices, except for the county council, I'm glad that my vote will be, if we go this route, that he or she would not be able to compromise your ability to be quite independent. Going to number seven here, administration of county departments. Then it changes a little bit. I think you did speak to this, and I appreciate that. That the operation of all offices and departments devising ways to make efficiency and economy. I can't imagine being the district attorney and having the concern that, under my supervision, a county manager coming in and just at will, and I think this document gives he or she that, that opportunity, and that yeah, I can't imagine me being district attorney and simply having that concern that I am being compromised in my ability to manage my own people and my own department. And when you look around, and the more I look around at the department heads we have here, when I first came into office, I thought, there's got to be some lazy employees around here somewhere. Haven't found them yet. Haven't found them yet, and to the contrary. And so I'm trying to understand whether that person gets an $80,000 package or a $130,000 package. Who is left to manage? Here we go to number seven here. My vision, as you referenced, Mr. Barnes. Excuse me, number eight. Engage, this is the suggested projects for a discussion that we went over Friday. The 28th, Community Development Director Johnson. Short paragraph, bear with me, Mr. Chair, engage SCDC to represent Curry County on the recently formed Southern Oregon Coast Community Tourism Steering Committee. This effort will put Curry County at the table of organizations zeroing in on tourism along the coast. Well, my vision is, I know a little something, as I, forgive me, as I mentioned earlier today. I know a little something about tourism, recreation, marketing, and I think I can contribute. That's my job. We don't need to hire somebody else to do that. Just for reference here. Now, I've been doing county college, and I'm going to graduate. If I have to stay up and do the college crash course at the very last minute, I'm going to graduate. The legislature's in session right now, as you well know. So that's got me spread a little bit thin. But after those, after the county college is completed, and after the legislature hopefully gets out of session before August, and I believe they will, I'm going to have a lot of time, and I'm going to be in the office every day. I don't need any, I have no reason to get on a plane for this county. I have no reason to, to do anything except go out of this county when I'm convinced, and subject to the board's approval, it is a very important meeting, and then that responsiveness ability to report back to you. Again, I see part of that as my job. We have a skeleton staff over there with Council Huddle, Brenda Starbird, and now John Jesuit. We're going to unfortunately be looking for a new county accountant. But there's a very good system that we have here, and does it need refine? Always. But when you bring a job description that says you're going to be able to control and supervise all county administrative departments, there again, we could be losing our, our juvenile, just for example, I'm, I'm not I'm not saying there's any issue there, but we could be losing our juvenile and, and parks department person, because there's unnecessary pressure. These people are doing their job, excuse, their job. We need to get to know them better. We need to support them. We need to challenge them. And they've risen to that challenge. They really have. With lack of pay raises, with consolidations, with, with, my goodness, our sheriff loses three deputies to the city of Brookings in six months, year, whatever. I better be careful to get it absolutely accurate. But the point is, we've got to support these people, and we're not ready for this. This document's not ready. This, this document, right here, job description, job title. We don't have a budget for it. We don't know how much staff that person is going to need. And I, I just, I just have a lot of apprehension and reluctance with, what am I going to be dealing with? And I, I saw City Administrator Fritz walk by my office today, not even say hi, and I'm going, where did that come from? So I'm thinking, what is, what is the long-term consequences for not pulling everybody together? And, and, and I'm concerned that, to the contrary. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I comment, did you have any thing further?
Well, I just think we need more continuity. We have commissioners coming and going. We've been doing it this way for ever since I've been here, and I don't think it's been effective, to be honest with you.
I'll make some comments, Dave, and certainly take your comments, you know, constructively. They're not destructive, they're constructive. We had also, we had talked in earlier discussions, as far as an organizational chart also, to better show this as a picture. That's in every business I've been involved in. That's where I started, always, always.
First thing I ask for is an auditor.
Also, the, and I'm going to give you a couple of examples, as it is currently, okay? And these are actual examples. We can get some echoes, or?
Yeah, you've echoed it up in this one.
My echo's, yeah.
You guys hear it out there?
Sure, I'm wondering if it's the TV needs to have the sound turned down by the TV wand or something. Don't know.
Magic, thank you. That was power. The current structure, and these are my opinions, okay, and, and then I'll give an example, is absolutely dysfunctional, okay? From a commissioner's- Uh, from a commissioner's perspective, you have three elected members of the, call them the governing body. That are technically the boss, three, not one, not two, three, of the department heads, okay? Well, that, that does not work, you can't have three bosses, you can't have two bosses, you will have problems. Um, and that is in great part, you know, to put this under one person who has actual authority, responsibility, accountability and authority. Um, example, and it's made it, you know, very difficult for me, you know, as one who was in the private sector uh, for all my life, all my working life. Um, a while back, probably six months ago or so, okay? Now, at this point, county council has temporary oversight of the commissioner's, board commissioner's office, okay? And he has technically three bosses, okay, which doesn't work well, okay? Um, I have no.
I don't have any complaints, Mr. Chair.
He has no complaints for the record, okay, thank you.
You gotta note that now, take that into your consideration.
Um, that has not always been the case in all the situations and I won't go, go into those. Um, there was an issue that arose one day in the commissioner's office, I was the only commissioner there, county council was out somewhere. Um, it, there was a deadline, I made a, um, I was asked by, uh, I believe it was the, the, uh, I believe it was Carolyn Johnson was trying to get something on an agenda, okay? And couldn't, we were dealing also with the Oregon Department of Transportation or something. So I made a management decision in order to get that, I, I gave instructions, email instructions and asked, it wasn't uh, the individual that's here now, but I gave instructions to please do this, contact this person to get this thing on the agenda. Um, I rightfully, you know, heard back from county council. Uh, I was not to direct his subordinates to do anything in writing. Now technically that was correct, okay, and I'm not picking on him, I'm trying to give you an actual example. There are some much more serious, much, much more serious examples that have occurred that I'm not gonna go into. But again, it's because of the same thing. Uh, we have, you know, we talk about commissioners changing, we have had, uh, recently we have run into issues with the subject of grants, okay? Big, big dollar issues, okay? From two years ago, well, from six months ago, a year ago, two years ago, three years ago, five years ago. All have, you know, when it rains, it pours, well, uh, there are four or five, at least now that we're aware of, you know? And there are things that were, were not done properly. Uh, we have gone back and we see exactly, in many cases, whodunit, okay? They're still here, again, names aren't important, it's the system that exists, this dysfunctional system that creates these things is that people are not held accountable for what, what they do. Because nobody has the, the authority or, you know, certainly not the commissioners who ultimately get involved in these types of things. County council who ultimately gets involved in these types of things. The accountant who ultimately gets involved in these. And it's these types of examples, the order of magnitude that we're talking about on some of these, these nightmares, you know? I've mentioned it previously, just as far as the airport, the Brookings Airport grants. That's now minor at sixty thousand dollars or so compared to some other little surprises we're, we've run into. Um, had it, and, and, so had it been different, you know? And we had the right, and I think you might have pointed out, you know, you can have a, a good administ, a person and it doesn't matter the form of government that you have. You can have a good leader, you can have a bad leader, in any form of government. You can have a badly, a bad form of government, you can have a good leader and things work awfully well. You can have a great, perhaps form of government and a bad leader and, and things are really bad. But it's for some of those reasons that I feel that we need someone to be held accountable, one person. Uh, and then again, it's this board that, but it's, it's one fire after another, put one fire out after another. And that's what it's been, that's what, that's what this week has been, this past week on these. And those fires aren't out, these are huge, to me, huge, huge liabilities. And there's lots more, again, county council's up to his eyeballs in, in these at this point. He, not because he wants to, because he's responsible and he's involved.
And the county accountant, but I'm concerned because there's a legal exposure.
But, but he's concerned, okay? Uh, but it's to, to take a totally different structure with, you know, and again, the, the, the hope, the objective, the intent is always to get the, the good leader, not the, not the bad one. Um, and to give a single leader, you know, under a different structure, certainly from an organizational standpoint. The responsibility, the accountability and the authority to, to do those things. And that for the commissioners to do more of, um, not day-to-day, you know, this person should do this, this person should do that, you know, in, in the office type things or in the parks or in the, whatever, but, and, and to make policy decisions, to look budget-wise, to look at policy type decisions and have the time to do that, because I think that's what they were elected to do, to make good policy decisions, hire good people. Leaders to make things more, more efficient and more financially acceptable.
If I might, again, I'll quote Mr. Huddle from the last workshop meeting on this. That, um, it frees you up to, to spend your time on high-level activities and not be bothered with the mundane of the day-to-day. Uh, but you know, I, I went and I asked for a copy of what your duties all are. And you know, you're giving away, you're abdicating most of the responsibility that you were elected and agreed to perform when elected to office. You know, you've only been in office, two of you have only been here less than four months now. I don't really think you've given it much of a college try in terms of seeing if you can make it work after only four months. You know, Commissioner Huxley, you've been here for two years now. But I understand that this is the only time, we've never, there's never been a county commissioner, there's never been someone like this before. And it's just, I find it strange that, that the need all of a sudden arises now. But as I said in, in my opening and I'll repeat again in my closing. Since you're looking at changing this form of government, since you're looking becoming more ceremonial than executive and administrative. I really believe that that's something that you should put out to the voters and let the voters pick who their administrator and who is going to lead this county is going to be.
Thank you. One, one last comment and putting it out to the voters, you know, we have had two unsuccessful home rule charter ballot measures that went out to the, to the people. With that, um, more of that line where you have the, as, as a not general law county then, but under a home rule charter. You have much more, I don't wanna say authority, but creativity to, to choose your structure. Um, some home rule charters have, have similar structures to general law, some don't have similar structures. And, and a, a home rule charter is not a success any more than a general law is a success. Uh, county council?
Oh, um, thanks, Mr. Chair, if I could. So, and I appreciate the sentiment, um, just wanted to kind of focus, this is not a vote to approve the position. It is a vote or a discussion or a direction to bring back, if, if the board wants to, for a future date to approve. Uh, and I'm looking for a direction, I thought in a, in a very narrow scope on, on this agenda item for today. I, I think what we're doing is we're starting to get into the, the discussion of what really could probably be better for the future. Um, so for today, I think if, if, you know, the, the members of the board could give me direction on how they wanted those questions to be addressed in a future version of this ordinance, we could continue this conversation at a.
I, I totally know that what I'm saying here today is more of the public comment when the ordinance is introduced. But at the last workshop meeting on this, I cared to speak and was told not to, and I need to speak on this at a general meeting. It's on your agenda, it seems to be a topic that comes up at every meeting. So, you know, I thought I would let you know my thoughts on it. You know, like you said, if, you know, like I said, I just, I really think it's that important a question that it really should be put to the, put to people, you know? I'm sure the sheriff would love to get two extra cops for what you're gonna pay this person to.
Here.
Thank you, Dave. Commissioner Boyce, do you have any other comments?
Council, thank you, yes, thank you. Uh, thanks for the clarification here on where we kinda need to be focused today, but back to Mr. Barnes, just, uh, as a reminder, yeah, this has come up a lot. And, uh, I'm reminded by the people that are counting on me and will definitely hold me accountable. And there are plenty of them in all geographical areas of the county. That, uh, I wasn't put here on the high level, being at high level, I was put here to do the twenty-four-seven task and I think we all were. And, um, what is, when you look at a county administrator, the first thing that comes to mind, that person is also going to have three bosses or they'll be loyal to one or two and they'll, uh, they'll disregard, uh, and that, that's just almost human nature, they'll disregard one or two of the others. And so, um, that, that is a concern I have. As far as the team goes, we could be different. We could be, uh, the board that finally gets this worked out and simply puts our shoulders together to the wheel and pushes forward and overcomes these things and, and, uh, and not be a status quo board. Uh, and I think the people clearly have spoken, they're counting on us to do that. And so that's the opportunity before us and I'm just gonna keep encouraging both of you on that and try and do my part. And, uh, uh, yeah, I, I don't wanna become a glorified ribbon cutter, that's not, that's the most boring thing I could possibly think of. And so, um, of all the people we're talking to, you bet Commissioner Gold, there is pro and con. And, uh, I'm gonna emphasize, yeah, we need to bring it specifically before the voters again. Um, to see if, uh, they want a county administrator, if they want, uh, that, that person to have real or perceived too much control in the other departments. Uh, thanks, thanks for keeping this dialogue open and offering again, uh, like we did the tourism promotion, IGA agreement, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just have a couple of comments back to, to get focused back on, on what county council has addressed here. Um, and I, I have my copy of my notes from the, the previous meeting. Because for the, um, for the county administrator, it was the same document. Um, and there are, there is now a new, um,
Job, job description.
Uh, job description, which I, I mentioned, you know, I think took a lot of the good points. Well, I'll call them bullets from this proposed, um, ordinance or order, let's call it either or. Um, and is, is a much better job description than, than we had previously. Um, what I, and I also had gone through, because as you'd mentioned, you know, I had marked out or removed county council from being, at least in my, my draft or my comments. Um, as far as falling, not under the board, but under the administrator. And what I would like to see, and I think there may, even with, if, if that direction or that draft, and this is what it is, okay? Was to, was to go forward. I think there might be some reference in the job description, the same thing that would have to be changed. I didn't go through and, you know, and mark on that, but I would like to, um, to see a cleaned up version, although I don't think it's gonna make, result in that many changes. But you know, then it gets into the, some of the whereas's or the, the more of the legal jargon. And bring this back to the board for, um, a further discussion, perhaps in a workshop, I have a, you know, and I'm just throwing that out versus a, you know? Because I think some of the dialogue was very good with, with Dave, but I think that there's, that, that would be a better place for that type of comments perhaps, if, if the board, you know, took, took public comments also.
Technically, the board wouldn't have to take public comments, but, um, from staff's point of view, as someone who's worked on this. I, I'm not interested in doing another workshop, um, you know, I, I think it's time to fish or cut bait, um, quite honestly.
Then I would ask that you, that you do that.
Cut bait, fish?
Fish, fish, fish and cut bait.
Alright, yeah.
Educational.
And then again, we should take a motion, you know, in, in direction from the, from the majority of the board.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I'll try to summarize what I heard. We have the two options I was looking for, one, county council under the administrator or directly to the board. I hear, what I heard, thought I heard you say is the county council would be under the administrator. You'd also, and again, I didn't put it in here and I apologize, you'd like a, um, a, a, an organizational chart. And I had, um, obtained two of those, but I didn't include them in the material so I could uh, work up a proposed organizational chart. And I didn't hear you say anything about changing the administrator's authority over the employees of the other elected departments. So that would remain where that administrator, at least that's what I'm hearing from you again, the need of motion from the board or something like that. And then, and then really I think we just need to bring it back for an ultimate adoption or not. I, I think another workshop would, I, I just question what benefit that would have. Um, I, I don't have much more to offer, uh, from a staff's point of view on a workshop on this. So I don't know what, what I could do for you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boyce?
I'm going to disagree strongly with, uh, Council Huddle there. Um, Mr. Barnes presenting today, uh, I promise you, and I'm no surprise to you, I'm sure. Uh, he represents a good segment of the population that basically is saying, what are you talking about? Do your job. Uh, and not to be too blunt there, but, uh, and if I do, did understand correctly, apparently I did. Uh, you want county council to be under the administrator as well.
That's correct.
Wow. So that person has no political transparency to the public, uh, that we do. And, uh, it, uh, he can, he or she can quickly make the commissioners almost insignificant. And they're the people who've spoken. Uh, and that is the history, more so than not on that. Uh, Council Huddle, quick question, did you say that you would change the position summary uh, and somewhat related, number seven, under administration of county departments? That, that, did you catch my concern that, um, the administrator would have a joint authority with the department heads, for lack of a better term?
I, I did not, I mean, I, I think I caught that was, if I understood you correctly to say that the, and again, I don't even, I think it was more of a sentiment I was feeling versus words exactly put this way. But my understanding is you would like the department heads to have more autonomy, both elected and appointed over their employees, is that a?
I don't want them to be subordinate whatsoever or their employees to a county administrator.
Oh, I see, okay, right, so.
They'll have two bosses and the same problem that we're, Commissioner Huxley is identifying today.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, I, I think a team of three can work. And, and, and the history on that is overwhelming as well, when they're, when they're trying to build bridges and, and all that goes with that. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm speaking right now on behalf of the department heads that they are not subordinate to a county administrator. Uh, I guess another way to put this, who would we not be? Who, who is in our, our little building here would not be subordinate to a county administrator?
You three.
Okay, but I think there's some argument there that that's, that, that may, may, may be subject to how it works long-term.
I think it went to your first statement, that this person could quickly more or less usurp, you know, the powers from the board. It wouldn't be so much a usurpation, it would really be a delegation, but I think it's the eye of the beholder kinda thing you're saying there. Um, but that's where the board has the ultimate power over this individual and, and yeah, it becomes, like you said, a, a numbers game perhaps. And yeah, it becomes, like you said, a numbers game, perhaps, two of the three commissioners and whatnot. Could I ask you a question, Commissioner Boyce?
Certainly.
You mentioned your trip to Jackson County and you talked to their elected officials. And then you had another follow-up appointment. I think you said you were going to talk to their county administrator. Did this topic come up during that visit or not so much? Because they've had a county...
Actually, the county administrator has not contacted back. I don't know if, maybe my email didn't get to him, or maybe he's too busy, or maybe he's not interested. But I have previous emails that he would be most willing to help us. And so I'm a little baffled, but I appreciate your question.
Yeah, I just wondered if those all folks you talked to had any idea of whether they thought it was a decent organization structure, I guess.
Only one commissioner I've talked to, Commissioner Roberts, in the past. And I'm going to guess that she's very happy with the situation they have. Have not talked to Commissioner Strasser or Dyer specifically on that.
Right, I just...
This is Jackson County, correct, that you're talking about? When I heard the doc, because I spoke with him, I spoke with the manager.
Well, good. Anyway, thanks. That was just a question. And again, I know, gosh, I forget Dave's last name, but I know, say that again.
Dave Barnes.
Barnes. Mr. Barnes was up here talking and he talked about his experience. You know, and maybe it's just my comfort level, what I'm used to. We had a city manager. I felt like there was one go-to person for a decision. As you know, even to get a small administrative agreement on something requires a meeting and there's all these public record rules. There is some streamlining with a county manager to make these executive and administrative decisions. And I think there's some value there. And, you know, I don't want to go into all the details. We talked about some of them in executive session. But our grant situation, I think, is illustrative of a good way to have it. I did say I don't have an issue with the three of you, or even the past three commissioners. I, you know, was able to work with that structure. But at the same time, as the county's risk manager and even the lawyer, I feel there's also a benefit to have a one-person decision maker. We may have been able to avoid some of these issues that we're seeing with some of these grants, may have, again. And where we did have, where I did come from with a city manager, and there were a couple there, we didn't have those type of issues that we're seeing, that this county has seen. So I don't know if that's attributable to the lack of the position. But I know in the one organization where we had it, we didn't have these issues and where we don't have it, we do. So I can only talk from my experience. I'm just offering that for the board. But again, you know, it's up to the board on that.
Could I make a couple of comments, Chair?
Commissioner Gold?
Managing something with three people who cannot talk except in a meeting makes absolutely no sense to me. For instance, when someone came to you for a decision, you can't truly make a decision unless all three agree on it, because we're working as a group.
But I did.
But you did. But that could have been...
We're with you.
And it was. It was contested, which is, that happens. I have worked as a commissioner and a board member with a manager situation, and it works very, very efficiently. The board is not just a rubber stamper. They're there to make policy and look at the big picture type of things. And I really feel very strongly that we need this. So as far as the Counsel Huddle, being under the manager...
Again, don't use Counsel Huddle. It would just be any council.
No, I can see pros and cons of that. County Council, okay. Excuse me for using a name. But I think there needs to be one go-to person. And then we would have, as a commission, we would be over that individual and he would be our one employee.
There is, if I could...
County Council?
Well, Commissioner Boyce did make a observation. I know I said that there was an issue with, I think, an elected district attorney. I want to say East of the Cascades, and they came in and wanted to change. And the deputy district attorney, I think, are county employees, and the district attorney is a state employee. And so the elected official there wanted to come in. That, again, I think those are both the rare, I think in Roseburg or Douglas County, had to do with an assessor. But those are rare circumstances. But also with an attorney, there are certain, I mentioned my professional obligations. In these, I think we might need a carve-out for, again, the sheriff, because there's some statutory things there. And then with the DA's office, it might be difficult to have a county administrator trying to oversee or even do anything with those, because they're technical, legal, and there's certain professional rules of conduct. So that might be another carve-out if the board was thinking of going in the direction of having the, at least considering or bringing something back. I could include that as a carve-out, if that's with consensus. But again, I don't know. I think we're looking for then just a direction. I won't even ask for a motion, but if I could summarize, because I feel like we're getting long in the hour on this. If I could summarize, I'll bring back, you know, again, you asked for a workshop. I don't, I can't contribute anything further, I don't think, to a workshop. So if you're, bring back an ordinance for a thumbs up or thumbs down, it would include the county attorney under the county administrator, but accept the sheriff and the DA. And then the county administrator, you could still make this decision at that time. But the draft would have the administrator then have kind of hiring and firing authority and disciplinary authority of the other elected department's staff, who are county employees. So that would kind of be, if I could summarize in a nutshell what I'd bring back. I'm getting kind of nods from two out of three of you. No decision today. It's just going to come back. The decision will be probably on the 24th, if I can get it there. And I'd like to conclude this for today. There will be more to come, I think, the next time we bring it up. But I know we have a lot to do today still, so if that's okay with the board, that's what I'll do.
We have consensus of...
Well, I'm not going to get consensus from Commissioner Boyce. I'm just kind of...
I'm all for another workshop, as you know, for public input. We can't solve problems without everybody we can possibly get involved, in my view. Thank you.
I'm okay without a workshop. I think we've passed and discussed enough.
All right, and you'll still be able to talk about that more next time.
There's no saying if the bus is out of gas, you can't hire a manager to tell the driver how to drive. You got to get, find some gas. So they will have a workshop on funding needs. Thank you. Yeah, find some gas.
So...
Uh-oh.
I'm right behind you.
I'm not going to say anything.
What?
Oh, hopefully it didn't show up on the mic. It was a joke about gas, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay. My fault.
Hopefully it did. This last one, and I'll try and keep this very short. I put this on, this is Agenda Item 12. It was put down as a presentation by the board. Basically, this was just to try and put out the information that I had at the time. I'm not sure why there is, this has to do with Crescent City or Del Norte County Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. And there is a member of, there's seven board members. And there's one board member from Brookings, and there was one board member for years from Curry County. So when I ended up, just the first of the year, as being the liaison to the Brookings Airport, the member that was Commissioner Brown, who had been the liaison and the board member to Del Norte County, I was made the board member to Del Norte County. So what they have, what they are putting forth at this point, of course, they're in a major expansion of the airport to the tune of 15-plus million dollars to the Del Norte Airport down there in Crescent City. They have, by law, I guess every two years, they put out to bid the contract to provide air service. And because it's such a small community, there are significant subsidies, federal taxpayer subsidies. All of this documentation was included in the full package so that anybody interested could review it. There were two proposals. There was a proposal from Penn Air, who took over from Sky West back about mid or late 2015. And the second proposal was from Boutique Air. I have no idea where they came up with the name, but it's Boutique, B-O-U-T-I-Q-U-E, Air.
It's a pretty sweet.
And they have, they took a different approach in their proposal and submitted the proposals. They submitted, Boutique Air submitted six possible scenarios. Penn Air submitted this identical one that they've been running, and that is two flights per day, seven days a week, to Portland. Boutique had offered on their sixth choice, their fifth choice, was to run about 30 flights per week versus 14. And approximately two per day average to Oakland Airport, to get back towards that direction, where they said that Southwest is a carrier there for making connections. And three flights a day to Portland with a smaller aircraft. So basically to give more available flights in two different directions with a much smaller aircraft. And again, the proposals are there. They also included to the board the statistics, the flight statistics that they call inplanements and deplanements numbers. And they, at the end of each month, within a day or so, they gather these numbers and they separate for paid passengers only, so that they keep track. And they take the total and divide it by two, because, just because that's the formula that they use. So it's not that if you fly one direction and then fly back, it's not counted as two. It's counted as one in their final calculations. The magic number for the airports, I guess, in rural communities like Crescent City, certainly, is 10,000 of those inplan, or deplanements, inplanements, deplanements per year. That opens them up in a future year, a year or two in advance, to receive a $1 million grant to do additional upgrades to better that airport, to increase their traffic, their passenger traffic. They had not, this in 2016, they did not make that. If they don't make it, was one of my questions, what happens then? That drops them from a million, a million plus, to 150,000. That's the max. So it's a huge...
So is that why they're offering more flights?
Pardon me?
Is that why they're offering more flights?
Let me, let me just, you know... The reason that, and the statistics and the graphs of this Boutique Air were quite impressive to me as a non-air, you know, expert, certainly airline expert. And what they've done to passenger counts at small, after small rural airports, but their passenger count increases after they've received the contracts have been phenomenal. And it's on the graphs that are in the full packet. One comment that they had made to, in their proposal, or in one of their written comments, was that they felt very comfortable that if the Crescent City or this board, the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, shows them, that they would be able to reach this magic 10,000, which would give the airport, I found out later, an extra $1 million to do further improvements at a future year, in one or two years down the road. And it's a way that they said, we feel confident, that absolutely confident. I submitted a question and said, please define what's absolutely confident, you know? And they surprised me in their written response, and this is all going back to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, not directly to me. They said, we are so confident, because we've done the study, we've looked at the numbers, we've looked at what happens if you go just one direction. You lose a lot of traffic going with people the other way. We've seen this work before in these airports that we've gone into. We are absolutely sure, we're so sure, that if we don't, we'll pay an extra half a million dollars to you at the end of that year for not making that goal. And they finalized it by saying, in other words, we'll put our money where our mouth is. That's really about, all the comments that I had, they had explained how they work these subsidies. That was a question I was interested in. So they sent me all the details on that. But the one that really impressed me was their position, their reasoning, more flights, smaller, clearly aircraft, fewer passengers, but more choices, more directions. We've seen it work. We're so confident that it will work. Here's our commitment to you. We will put that in writing if we're awarded. So I don't know if anybody would have any questions on this, but that's an overview summary of what I know. County Council?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'll hold my comments till the other commissioners. But John Jesuit and I saw something in the newspaper maybe related to this that we wanted to give to you. And I don't know if we made copies for each commissioner or just...
Good job, John. Thank you.
And at the end, I think it tells people where they can make comments. It seemed like it was on this topic and...
Yes, what happened here was...
But I know some of the other commissioners had some comments.
I'm trying to think if I had put this in the document too. I asked, another question I asked of the two managers that are managing this project at Crescent City, at this Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, who, by the way, and I think they run a real first-class professional board meeting, super professional on it. I asked, when this came out, I said, have you, how does your public notice work? It works different in California. It really does. They said, well, we contact the so-and-so at the triplicate and they put it done. And I said, well, so you don't have to publish a public notice for this com... And they said, no. I said, okay. They said, as long as we get it in the paper. I said, well, would they, did they, by chance? Because they, and they said, and a lot of times, you know, they'll publish if it's applicable in the pilot also. And I said, well, can you find out if they did? And they said, no. After they checked, they said, no, they didn't. And I said, well, but they said, we asked them to. That's how this ended up in the pilot.
And we are coming up on the hour for the...
Yeah, we have, yeah. So that's how this did. That time has expired, you know, the 30-day period has expired to make... But not, they said they would still welcome, but this is what they just told me. They would welcome comments, you know, future comments. But by the time I asked a question, they respond. We finally got, you know, got it into the pilot. But only because they asked if they would please do so after I raised the question.
So we need a motion to continue the meeting, I think, for a time certain.
Or we could just wrap it up, County Council.
I need two minutes.
I think the other commissioners have something to say.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. I had some people interested in this and I was just curious. Are you looking for us to endorse?
No, I'm not. I'm not.
Okay, you're not looking to...
Absolutely not. I just want information for the people in Curry County.
As a person, you can do this.
Yeah, but you can do that. But I do not, absolutely not want to take the position.
So do you have, do you have part of the decision-making process in this?
I am one of seven votes.
Okay. So has the decision been made already or no?
But it's on the agenda to vote tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay. Well, I...
Again, this was late, but not for lack of trying to get it, you know, to get the information out. But I think, I think they missed the vote, I think, but I can't, that's 2020.
I did get some concerns from some people on the boutique, that the cost to the individual people going on the flights would be more that the luggage situation, because they are such a small airline, Penn Air's with Alaska Airlines. And so having your luggage put on other airlines, you know, with the connecting airports is a lot easier.
That question did come up, okay, and they do not have a luggage charge.
There's no luggage charge, but having it...
They don't charge.
Put on another plane would be...
That was, and I know who you're, who you've talked to. That has not, that did not come up in any of the meetings, as far as this being an issue.
So that might be something to ask before the vote.
And no fee for change... And no fee for changing a ticket either, which I thought was pretty cool.
What I was referring to, Mr. Chair, is we're still on presentations and...
Do we have any?
No, but we have a two-and-a-half-hour limit on our meetings, and we've reached that limit, so we need a vote from the board to go beyond.
Or we can adjourn.
Well, it's up to the board, but...
I just need two minutes.
Vote to, is that a vote to extend by two minutes?
I'll vote to extend for two minutes.
There you go.
Just two minutes?
So how about three?
I'll give you 15.
No, no, no.
Okay.
You're worried I'm gonna vote 10?
Just in case, I don't want to take another vote.
How about five?
I'll split the difference, seven and a half.
Okay, seven and a half, sold.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I'll second, seven and a half minutes.
Thank you.
You're gonna be disappointed, it's only gonna be two. I'm gonna have a full report on the 24th, our general meeting. Three bills, though, in the state, the state house, that are, they're still alive, and it really is good for Curry County, has potential to be. Number one is 2363, which is a 2% tax going back to the tax assessors, the counties can opt out of that, but it's, the best way to summarize this, it's 98% goes to the taxing districts, 2% the assessors, the taxing districts do not have to any paperwork. 3435, that's been narrowed down to Clamath, Curry, and Yam Hill Counties, it's the secure road funds loan, road fund loans, that the board could do in the future, so stay tuned on that. And then the last one was 3374, and where's my notes on that? I'll give you a report on that later, that's actually doing pretty well, that might be, yeah, I'll give you a report later. I also talked to Jeff Marinow about the 500 Forest Acres, on how we might appraise that someday, of course, I didn't commit him or the county, he's an old friend, but very well-respected, and he gave me some good insight, I can report on that later. The reason we might want to consider appraisal at some point is if we ever do have an opportunity to trade that to the state, BLM, whatever, if we had that information, be it all forest, if it be partially residential, that could just be really, improve the county position there, and I have no idea what that would take, how we would pay for it, he might even do a pro bono, more on that later. I talked about a fire school in Portland, I've since had a good conversation with Don Kendall, and he believes that we can update our fire plan for the next two years. It is outdated, I don't quote me, but I think he said 2008, but he is on that, I'm glad to report, and should have known that, and, yes, I'll give you something on that on the 24th. As you know, I'm concerned about fire danger coming up this year, and I just want to kind of be on my toes and report to the board on that. That's all I have. Oh, on the 31st, Council Huddle's trying to help me get Darren Nevel from the Oregon Department of Transportation on the...
Workshop?
Workshop, yeah, that is a workshop, and that would be okay, though, if he wanted to or could come and report to us.
It's a Wednesday.
So that would be on, basically, Port Orford to Brookings, the condition of Highway 101.
Okay.
Excuse me, I forgot to mention ODOT.
I think, no, I think you did. Did we have another item on for the 31st that someone had talked about, do we remember?
31st of what?
May, hold on.
Treasurer.
The treasurer.
Treasurer probably.
Thank you.
The most we might need for Mr. Neval, 20, 30 minutes, but he's willing to drive down from Roseburg, and I would appreciate if the board, yeah, he'd like to make a report.
So that would be a workshop, so that'll be, the 31st will have two topics.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Which date is Judge Mark Golis on there?
The 24th, at 1:30, because of the court schedule.
Okay, I think I've already talked enough today, I'll...
Well, I'm trying to think if we have bargaining on the 24th. I'll get back to you.
That date stands out to me.
Not now, you don't.
I think it's in the afternoon.
But you have three, you have three and a half minutes left, County Council?
No, no, not me, I'll get back to you off the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, two and a half minutes.
I'm finished.
Okay, we are going to adjourn at 12:36, thank you.
You're not doing a report?